Evening. I'd like to welcome everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Twinsburg City Schools Board of Education and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
She's absent.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Travis?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'll move to my president's report. We don't have any items for addendums or changes to the agenda. So, okay. So again, good evening, guests, staff, and Twinsburg community. I'm Mark Curtis, and I'm honored to serve as your board president. As we close another year, we have much to be proud about. Last week marked another state of schools address in partnership with the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. We learned about all the wonderful things happening in our school district and also acknowledged students who received scholarships, awards from many local businesses. All of my board colleagues were also in attendance to witness not only students being recognized, but also recognizing our staff. Specifically, Mrs. Cindy Kurtz of the Twinsburg High School was recognized as Rotary Teacher of the Year by the Rotary Club of Twinsburg for her unwavering dedication to doing what she loves, which is getting the most out of her students and helping them reach their full potential. It was also nice to see district staff and teachers assist in presenting what they've been doing throughout the school year to prepare our students for success. Next week, another momentous occasion will be underway, and that is the ceremony of our graduating seniors at Akron University's E.J. Thomas Hall. While it's been a long year, it's been over two years since we last held a graduation at this venue, and we're looking forward to celebrating their achievements as they embark on a new chapter in their lives. As we continue educating our students during these extraordinary times, it is my hope that being back there represents another step towards normalcy. Finally, during most board meetings, we normally celebrate the achievements of our students. However, this evening, we will be celebrating our district staff. We will also introduce both the teacher and Classified Staff of the Year. Additionally, a total of 12 are being recommended for continuing contracts, and we will induct another 10 retirees into the class of 2022, one of whom happens to be our current treasurer, Mr. Marty Aho. They represent a combined total of over 260 years of service to this school district, and we are eternally thankful for the commitment and sacrifice that they have made in allowing us to provide quality education to our children. I know that I'm not alone when I say that we wish you the very best in your retirement, and I hope that you don't make yourselves strangers as you enjoy the next chapter in your lives. This concludes my president's report, and I will now turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers, our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Good evening, everyone. We are just so excited to celebrate with everyone here tonight. You know, the first board meeting of the school year, we welcome new staff, and that's an exciting time, but this meeting, this one at the end of the year, is especially exciting because of your dedication to our 4,200 students here in our school district. So, we're going to celebrate with you in a little bit, but before that, I just have a few announcements to make for the residents who are watching via livestream. Of course, it's been a phenomenal school year. If you looked back two years ago, who would have ever imagined what we have been through as a school family? March of 2020, the world changed, and it's because of the commitment of those of you who are sitting in this room tonight, as well as all of our colleagues back in the schools, and in the Transportation Department, and in the Grounds Department, and the Maintenance Department, that we've made it through two school years of a pandemic, and I think we've done a great job. Obviously, we had to learn along the way, and there were things that we wish we could have thought to do better at the time, but thanks to your commitment and the commitment of all of our colleagues, our boys and girls are moving forward, and they're doing great, and that's really a remarkable thing to celebrate. As Mr. Curtis indicated, next Wednesday is commencement, and we're so delighted to be going back to E.J. Thomas Hall. We're not at the drive-in this year. We're not downtown at Rocket Mortgage. We are back at E.J. Thomas Hall, so we're excited about that return. We're really excited also that our friends at Community Focus will livestream the program. So, for those of our families who have families out of town, or for those of you who can't make it to the commencement and want to celebrate with our class of 2022, the program will be livestreamed that night. Just so you know, it will start at 7:30 this year. The reason it's starting at 7:30 and not 7 o'clock is because our track team is in a huge track meet, I think, at Austintown Fitch, and the kids are gonna run and then run back really fast and hopefully make it in time to get their diploma on the stage. And I hope they're celebrating a victory, too. So, we pushed back commencement's start time a half an hour to accommodate the fact that we hope the kids get to do their thing and then join us at E.J. Thomas Hall. Also, Community Focus will broadcast our commencement throughout the month of June on Spectrum Cable 1021, and then during the July 4th weekend, there will be a marathon of commencement ceremonies. That will be us, Nordonia High School, and Aurora High School. So, if you wanna catch the show repeatedly, or catch the neighbor shows, it'll be on the Community Focus channel, and we appreciate Dennis and the crew. They do a great job for us and really make us look good all the time, so thank you to Dennis. Our students' last day of school for this year is Friday, May 27th. I was telling my colleagues at the board office, Mr. Welker and I were at Dodge the other day, and we were talking about the end of the school year. It was Monday, and I said, "Well, how many days of school are left?" Well, they don't talk about days of school. They talk about wake-ups. So, at that point, there were nine wake-ups to go, so I guess they're celebrating they don't have to get up early after the 27th, so that was kind of funny. Monday, May 30th, is Memorial Day, and our community will once again pause and remember those who have lost their lives supporting us and our nation. Our Tiger Band will be in the parade, and we have, of course, a regiment from Wilcox Primary School that also comes out and memorializes with the veterans of VFW Post 4929. I also want to tell you, on the Saturday before Memorial Day, we have been blessed to be asked to memorialize Kiara Dumas. Kiara is a graduate of our high school who served in the military, and unfortunately, she was murdered, and she will be remembered in a ceremony hosted by VFW Post 4929 on Saturday, the 28th of May. And so, the family is very open to members of our community coming to celebrate her life and that of her children, and we hope you can join us for that program as well. And so, now, Board of Education, I have a special presentation for Mr. Aho. Our wonderful mayor, Ted Yates, and our wonderful councilperson, Dr. Daisy Walker, would like to make a special presentation to Mr. Marty Aho.
State your name and address.
I know the system here, so we gotta make sure we take this out.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. I don't know if I'm gonna need this. My kids say that my voice is loud enough as it is, but anyway, I just wanna talk to Mr. Aho about some of the things that he may not know that I know about him, but I've been doing some researching and talking and listening, and I look at that wonderful smile that you have every day. But anyway, I looked up the name Martin, and it means enthusiastic, happy spirit, spiritual personality, gift to talk, perseverant, expressive, optimistic, outgoing, cheerful, and charming. And the Aho, that means thank you, amen, yes, indeed, hello, yes, and agreement. If I had a name like that with my last name being amen, thank you, I don't know if you could contain me in this room. But anyway, you know, he fascinates others with his creativity, especially in his writing, and I know you're a writer, and the name Martin, it's the 16th most frequently reported surname in the United States, so that's something to be proud of, yes. And on behalf of the mayor and council, I would like to present you with this rose 'cause I noticed that you have on the color red, which is one of my favorite colors. And I just wanna say on behalf of the mayor and council, and the mayor will be saying something, "Thank you for your service, thank you for your longevity, and you will be sorely missed." Thank you.
All right, thanks, Daisy. I'm not as polite as Walker. It's been great getting to know Marty over the years. You know, when we look at the city and school district, everyone thinks that one of us controls the other, and we really do not here as a separation. However, there is a big overlap. A lot of the stuff we do in the city impacts the school as well as the school and the city, so it's a great partnership that we have, and it's something that we have to work towards. You know, this doesn't happen. I mean, we have to really work toward having that positive partnership between the city and the district, and you know, we want to have kind of a dashboard for both. You've got kind of where you have finance, you've got your organizational staff, you've got your customer service, or your service to your kids, and then you've got innovation, you know, but nothing happens without finance. And behind the scenes, you know, the people that run the finances of the city, and of the district, and of the township are important, but they're quiet, you know, but they serve such a tremendous role and purpose in how we operate. You know, Marty has done a fantastic job for the city for 20 years and for the school district, and he's just been part of a team that's just been a great partner with us. So, we have a proclamation, and I will read it, from council and myself. Whereas the administration, council, and residents of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio would like to express their appreciation to Martin Aho and honor him for his distinguished career as a Twinsburg City School District's treasurer and chief financial officer with 20 years of dedicated service to the community. Whereas since 2002, Martin has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. He has also received multiple Ohio Auditor of State Awards with distinction for excellence in financial reporting and consistently received unmodified audit reports, which is the best that a school district treasurer can obtain. Whereas Martin oversaw efforts to twice refund the Twinsburg High School bonds at lower interest rates, saving the community over $2 million, and whereas Martin helped secure financing for the 2004 capital improvement project that built out the high school addition, turf定了the field at Tiger Stadium, and paved and upgraded the bus parking lot. Whereas Martin was part of the team that helped obtain financing for multiple energy conservation projects, substantially reducing energy consumption by replacing boilers, HVC controls, and installing high-efficiency lighting. And whereas, quote, "Martin has been a dedicated treasurer and stalwart employee of the district for 20 years. Throughout his tenure, he has maintained our finances with the utmost integrity." And this was a quote from the Twinsburg School District Board of Education President Mark Curtis. And whereas Twinsburg City School District Superintendent Kathy Powers offers, "His stewardship of the community's tax dollars has helped our school district provide an outstanding educational experience for students. We will miss Marty tremendously, but wish him all the best in his retirement. Now therefore, I Ted Yates, Mayor of the city of Twinsburg, express my well wishes and congratulations to Martin Aho and wish him much happiness as he begins its exciting new chapter in his life." Thank you.
Well, Marty, there's more to follow, so just hold on. We're going to first begin to celebrate our educators who have attained the status of continuing contracts. As everyone knows, and we know even greater during a pandemic, teaching is a very complex job. It demands broad knowledge of subject matter, curriculum, and standards. Educators must have enthusiasm every single day of the school year. You can't not come to school and not be an enthusiastic teacher in front of those who you're responsible for. You have to command the curriculum and understand student development. You have to get to know the story of every one of the children that we have asked you to care for in every school year. And finally, educators must have a desire to make the difference in the lives of our students. And, you know, Board of Education, today, we, as a school community, learned of a situation with a family in our community, and a family is who's in a state of crisis and trauma, and it has been remarkable today to see our educators and our staff members pulling together and supporting a family in need. And so, those of you who know what I'm talking about know what has been going on today, and I am so grateful to all of you for your donations and your support of our families. And that's who you are, that's what you do. You know that there's a child or a family in need, and so beyond being a wonderful person in the classroom, you have great hearts, and you make it happen every single day for the children of our school district. So, tonight, we're going to celebrate you. And Board, just so you know, these educators who we're going to introduce, Mrs. McKinney's going to help me, holds these special qualities, as well as they have met the requirements necessary for a continuing contract, as noted in Ohio Revised Code 3319.08D, 3319.11B, and in Ohio Revised Code 3319.11, 3319.02, and 3319.09. So, we're going to be introducing members of our staff who've reached the plateau of continuing contracts. Mrs. McKinney is going to assist me with the presentation. Board of Education, if you would please come forward and congratulate staff members Our first educator to celebrate this evening is Miss Brandy Correa from George G. Dodge Brandy has been in the district for 21 years. I thought it was her retirement. Brandy became a teacher because she had the same teacher for first and second grade, Mrs. Dillon, and she truly inspired Brandy. She loved how she ran her classroom, and that is why she decided to become a teacher. She never wavered from that choice. One of Brandy's favorite memories is when her classes mummified chickens while learning about ancient Egypt. Oh, boy. I bet they think it's cool. A sense of humor has dappled Brandy through the hardest days, and it also helps to serve as a way to connect with her students. Patience is incredibly important in teaching, and flexibility is the other quality that she has found to be incredibly important over the years. Her students note that she loves to teach by being able to feel her general excitement for teaching and learning. She has an unending curiosity and loves to learn new things, and she shares that with her students. In her spare time, Brandy enjoys reading, going to museums, and spending time with her family.
Our next educator to receive a continuing contract is Abby Etcher. Abby is a fifth-grade math and science teacher at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Abby has been in the district for 11 years. It has been her dream since kindergarten to become a teacher. Other family members are also in education. She loves working with children. She has always worked hard in school and enjoyed teachers who made learning interesting and helped her become successful. Her favorite memory is of the month when the class came together as a family. Last year was a challenging year being in person during the pandemic, but we were able to build a best little family who worked together through difficult times and really watched out for each other. We grew close through challenges. Another example is a devastating year we lost our student, Courtney Jones, to leukemia. She was so proud of the students and how they came together in sadness to build a family in the room, though learning feels different when that happens. Abby considers the three most important qualities of a successful teacher to always be, to always remember that kids are kids, put yourself in your lessons and discussions with your kids, and be able to finger on your feet and be flexible. Her students know that she loves to teach by being honest, listening to them, and showing them that learning is exciting. In her spare time, Abby enjoys the outdoors with her two daughters, Addison five and Leona five months. She enjoys being by the water, hiking, camping, and eating good food. Congratulations, Abby Etcher.
Next, I'm honored to present Wayling Haldeman. Wayling Haldeman is a Chinese language and culture teacher at Twinsburg High School. She's been in our district for four years. It was Wayling's father's wish for her to become an educator because it's the most respectable profession in Taiwan. After her first year of being in the classroom, she found teaching very rewarding, especially when she saw students achieving their goals and eager to learn about Asia. She's very smitten with her teaching career. One of her favorite memories is when one of her students, who was adopted from China, found out what her real name was in Chinese Mandarin. The student decided she would be using that name in her class. Another memory is when a student was saying that her classmates were discriminating against another student because of her skin color. This then led to a discussion about the differences and similarities of Asian versus American cultures, a major focus being ethnicity, race, and religion. After lengthy discussion, everybody agreed to treat each other with respect and avoid discriminatory behaviors. Wayling considers the three most important qualities of a successful teacher is to be knowledgeable, empathetic, and a team player. Her students know that she loves to teach by always showing up and being available to them. And I have to tell you a story about Mrs. Haldeman. A couple of years ago, this was before the pandemic, Mrs. Haldeman's, I think it was her mom that was ill in Taiwan, and so she had to leave and go to Taiwan, and we struggled as a school district to find a qualified teacher of Chinese to be able to teach our students, and the students were getting behind. Mrs. Haldeman thought of the idea of her livestreaming from Taiwan into our classrooms at Twinsburg High School, and it worked. And this was pre-pandemic. Who would have thought, right, that you were a trendsetter, but you were, and because of your dedication to our students, and you also needed to care for your mom in Taiwan, both benefited on the opposite side of the world, so we thank you for always thinking of others. It's remarkable. In her spare time, Wayling enjoys watching movies, doing Chinese painting, singing, and dancing, and this year, she was nominated by the Chinese Academy of Cleveland for the Overseas Outstanding Teacher Award issued by the Hopewalk Cultural and Educational Foundation.
The next teacher who is eligible for a continuing contract, Brittany Hardery, is not here, but I am going to read a statement about her.
Keep her ass.
Brittany Hardery is a business and marketing teacher at Twinsburg High School. Brittany has been in the district for six years. Brittany became a teacher to give back to future generations and help students understand rural concepts. One of her favorite memories is Sanders students engaged in the mock trials she holds in business law. Brittany considers the three most important qualities of a teacher to be empathetic, consistent, and collaborative. Her students know that she loves to teach by the daily interaction she has with them and finding ways to be relatable and get you to know each and every one of them. In her spare time, Brittany enjoys exploring Cleveland, reading, walking her book, and spending time with friends and family. Congratulations, Brittany Hardery.
Our next teacher to celebrate is Mr. Chris Kuzas, and unfortunately, Chris is not here this evening. Chris is a Twinsburg High School math coach and also the Twinsburg Girls' Varsity and seventh-grade basketball coach, and Chris has been in our district for seven years. Chris became a teacher because he had some great teachers in high school that made teaching seem enjoyable and rewarding. He loves working with students and trying to show them his love for math. His favorite classroom memory happened on the tennis court, actually, when Claudia Nammey qualified for districts twice. Chris believes that a successful teacher must be patient and willing to adapt. He hopes that his students know that he loves to teach from the enjoyment he gets from solving difficult math problems. In his spare time, Chris enjoys golf, tennis, and going on hikes with his wife and his kids, and he's very grateful to the Board of Education and to Mr. Lynn for supporting him and for recommending him for the continuing contract this evening. Mr. Chris Kuzas.
The next teacher that is eligible for a continuing contract is Kristen Legazinski. Kristen is an intervention specialist with the IPP program at Wilcox Primary School. Kristen has been in the district for three years. Kristen became a teacher to help students develop a love of learning. She really enjoyed the IPP field trip to Patterson's Fruit Farm and the rodeo prep during the 2019-2020 school year. This year, her favorite memory was making the ice cream truck and ice cream. Kristen believes that the three most important qualities of a successful teacher is the ability to be flexible in your thinking and appreciation of others and a love of learning. Kristen's students know that she loves to teach because she's always creative and kind. In her spare time, Kristen loves spending time with her husband, Ron, and her two kids, Grant and Madeline. Kristen was previously an early childhood intervention specialist with the Iowa County ESC, serving as a center-based preschool teacher and intervention specialist.
She's my son's teacher, so it's special. Next, we'd like to celebrate with Mr. Jake Morrow. And next, we'd like to celebrate with Mr. Jake Morrow. Jake is a school counselor at George D. Dodge Intermediate School, where he's been with us in the district for the last four years. Jake became a counselor to become an ally to students in need and to be a positive role model for the community, both of which seem to be more and more important each year. One of his favorite memories is from the first quarterly awards assembly where students are recognized for their achievements. A student who was not normally recognized for positive behaviors won an award. Seeing the surprise and pride in his eyes as he heard his name was incredibly rewarding. Jake learned the three most important qualities for a successful teacher would be, or for a successful counselor in this case, would be to have empathy, persistence, and patience. His students know how much he loves to be a counselor because of the relationship Jake builds with each of them. They know that he is always there for them and he cares very deeply for them. In his spare time, Jake loves to explore nature and to stay active in activities that promote physical and mental well-being. Jake says he loves being part of the Twinsburg community and the opportunity to support our Tigers. Congratulations, Jake.
The next teacher that is eligible for a continuing contract is Thomas Neleka. I'm not sure if he's here. I don't think he is here. But Thomas Neleka. Thomas Neleka is a seventh-grade world cultures teacher. Tom has been in the district for eight years. He became a teacher because he enjoys the individual connections he makes with students. One of his favorite classroom memories is a classroom with students eyes getting wide when he explains breakfast is breaking your fast after sleeping. Tom believes that the three most important qualities of a successful teacher are patience, structure, and listening. His students know that he loves to teach because of his classroom decoration and love of small details. In his spare time, Tom enjoys reading for a book club, devising new ways to entertain his two sons. Tom feels he is so lucky to teach a class he loves. World Cultures should be taken all through the state, according to Thomas Neleka. Congratulations.
Our next educator to celebrate is Sarah Portier. Sarah is a speech-language pathologist at Samuel Bissell Elementary and Wilcox Primary. And Sarah's been with us in the district for ten years. I can't believe it's been ten years. Sarah became a teacher because she loves to see and touch children and help them to learn. She loves seeing the moment on their face when they understand a new concept and make a personal connection to what they are learning. Sarah can't choose just one favorite classroom memory, but one recent memorable thing is attending the Special Olympics and seeing current and past students participating in the fun events, and it was a great day. Sarah considers the three most important qualities of being a successful teacher are to be dedicated to the students, compassionate, and always willing to learn. Her students know that she loves to teach because they see her excitement and joy for them when they learn something new. In her spare time, Sarah enjoys spending time with family and friends, being outdoors, and reading. Her two children are in first grade at Wilcox, and her children, I'm sorry, and her husband is part of the high school baseball coaching staff, and we're glad that he's helping us there, too. Congratulations, Sarah.
The next teacher that's eligible for a continuing contract is Omar Santiago. Omar is a teacher at Twinsburg High School. He has been in the district, not really just for eight years. He is a 2008 Twinsburg High School graduate, so he's been around a while. Omar became a teacher to be a positive role model for students and encourage them to learn Spanish. One of his favorite memories is when he ate lunch with his students outside Dodge during the 2020-2021 school year, and they were having a conversation in Spanish. He considers the three most important qualities of being a successful teacher to be communication, empathy, and subject master knowledge. His students know that he loves to teach by being energetic and he is always willing to help them out. He also is always saying hi to the students in the hallway. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his wife and his son Nico, born for walks in Jive. He loves being part of the Twinsburg Tiger family at a place where he went to high school. Congratulations, Omar.
Next, we'd like to present Mrs. Emily Williamson-Hunt. Now, some of you may say, well, Mrs. Hunt is not a teacher. She is an assistant principal. Under Ohio Revised Code, educators who are administrators who earn a continuing contract in a previous assignment as a teacher and who have worked and earned excellent evaluations for two consecutive years as an administrator are then eligible to receive a continuing contract as a teacher. And so we're celebrating with you this evening. Mrs. Hunt gained the plateau of a continuing contract educator with the Euclid City School District and Maple Heights City Schools before becoming an administrator. So she fulfills the requirements, and we're excited for you to join us this evening. Emily has been our assistant principal at Twinsburg High School for the past two years, and she became a teacher because she believes in the power of education to change and improve one's circumstances personally and professionally. One of Emily's favorite memories is spending time reading all of the positive comments daycare students had described about one of her students who worked with them through his career tech program. They saw all of the wonderful attributes she had been trying to miss in him all year long. Emily believes that a successful educator should have a listening ear and a willingness to hear, a good memory with the ability to remember one's own teenage years, to have compassion for the ages with whom she works now, and high expectations to bring out the best in students. Students know Emily enjoys working with them when she makes time for them, whether it's to listen to a story, offer encouragement, challenge them to do better, or share a smile. In her spare time, Emily enjoys roller skating, going to church, watching a good movie, and spending time with family, whether it's at home or traveling. Congratulations, family.
Lastly, but not least, Jessica York, a biology and chemistry teacher at Twinsburg High School, is eligible for a continuing contract. She is not here tonight, but I will read a statement about her as well, but Jessica York. Jessica York has been in the district for eight years. She started with a degree in biology, but found a passion for learning. She's a fourth-generation teacher, so education was always extremely important to her family. She hopes to instill this in her students. One of her favorite classroom memories is when they were investigating invasive species in Ohio, and a student decided to contact the Stoman Research Lab. She was able to organize a demonstration of the sea lamprey for the class. The student used all of her twenty-first skills to research and create this experience for both her and her classmates. Jessica considers the three most important qualities of a successful teacher to be respect for children, willingness to collaborate, and being a lifelong learner. In her spare time, Jessica enjoys hiking, kayaking, biking, and gardening. Jessica would like to thank Mrs. Powers, Mr. Lynn, and the Board of Education for considering her for a continuing contract. Jessica York.
Mr. President, the Board of Education, it is my privilege tonight to recommend these outstanding, I'm sorry to get emotional, I know I've heard they work, these wonderful educators who lead with their heart, and lead with their minds, and really embrace the students under their care. It is my extreme pleasure, Board of Education, to recommend them for continuing contracts this day. And I thank you for your commitment to the Tigers here in our school family. Congratulations, one of them. Board of Education, if you won't mind, I'd like a photo with the continuing contract candidates, so we can post that. As you see, the children's photo app, so anyone who wants to. Thank you.
All right, we're going to switch gears, and now we're going to celebrate retirees. This evening, we have fantastic members of our staff who have been committed for so many years, and Belinda and I would like to introduce them to you. We have a small token of our appreciation for our retirees, and we ask that you stay up front with your gift, and you will have a nice picture when everyone is looking at you as well. So to begin, it is my honor and privilege to recognize our treasurer and my friend Marty Aho. Marty began his role as our district treasurer more than twenty years ago. Prior to working here, Marty was employed in the state auditor's office and with the Stoman Room for his school district. Marty's favorite memory, and one that makes all of us very proud of his dedication to our school district, is the fact that he has had clean audits for the past twenty school years. Marty said that he will miss his nice routine when he retires. I know when I go down to his office at noon, don't look for Marty without lunch. It's a private joke he and I have, since, why, if you come down, you know it's noon, I'm not going to be here. That's right. With regard to plans for his retirement, Marty says that he will be busy with his wife's honey-do list and, of course, traveling, and we know he'll be following the Guardians and any other major league baseball team that he enjoys, and that we wish you lots of love and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations.
The next retiree that we'd like to recognize is Trish Perrin. Trish has been teaching here in Twinsburg City School District for thirty-six years. This is the only school she ever taught. She went to Bowling Green State University, and this was her only interview back in 1986. She says she used a map to navigate her way on Bowling Green. She interviewed Ray Trostel, the principal at the time, and her starting salary was fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand six hundred dollars a year. Trish has many wonderful memories of her time with us. In earlier years, the staff would go out every week and socialize. We would go ginseng, and we even went to Las Vegas as a group to celebrate Marie Walter's retirement. Well, a long way from a bail and a board. We had staff and student volleyball games, dodgeball, and basketball games. The pep rallies back in the late eighties and nineties were so amazing. When she entered her first pep rally, she was shocked. The energy gave her chills. The students had so much fun. Our staff went to support the boys' baseball team as they played in a tournament for the state title. We went to basketball games to see James Posey play. Trish made friends with so many amazing people throughout the years, and she still keeps in touch with many students and staff members. Once she retires, Trish said that she will miss her fellow coworkers and her students. She is a people person. Trish enjoys being around the students, and she loves her math department. Trish also has built so many forever friendships with her coworkers and even some graduate students. She even has a group chat with some of her coworkers now that she does not want to leave. Trish feels that she has been so blessed to have the support of so many amazing teachers through the good and bad of our jobs and in her personal life. When asked about her retirement plans, Trish says that her plans are still up in the air. She does know she wants to travel more. She may still work, but she is looking forward to some flexibility in her schedule so that she can travel. Subbing off, there's a lot of flexibility. Trish already has a plan to travel with a group of friends to St. Thomas next February. She and her husband also purchased a condo in Clearwater, Florida as an investment and for their son Kevin. She plans to go there whenever she needs to get away from the cold. Trish also plans to just hang out and play with her crazy dogs. She has two Isis that require a lot of attention. Trish also wants to take a pickleball, start working out again, and take more walks in the metro parks. Congratulations, Trish.
My pleasure to introduce Dave Brown. Dave has worked in our school district for twenty-six years. Prior to being a part of our Tiger family, he worked in the Cleveland Metropolitan School District for three years. Further, Dave has worked as a part-time adjunct professor with Kent State University for the past twenty years. Dave's favorite memory, although there are many, is one of his former students who graduated from Kent State University in 2020. This young lady received her teaching license and came by school to show Dave her degree. She wanted to thank him for impacting her life, as she is now an elementary school reading teacher. Dave said that what he would miss the most is being a part of the process of reaching those students who are deemed of at risk by putting specific plans together with our team and getting those students to the finish line of a high school diploma. Dave has wonderful plans for his retirement, which includes visiting his bucket list of places with his wife, improving his golf game, and enjoying his three beautiful grandchildren. Congratulations, Dave.
Cheryl Pinnery is not here today, but I am going to recognize her retirement. Cheryl started working in our school district in February 1992 because she needed something to do on her kids, on the same schedule as her kids. Cheryl was attending a wrestling tournament and was sitting behind a bunch of ladies from the food circle, Jerry Bradley, Marley Marlowe, et cetera. She told them she was looking for work on the school schedule, and they told her to apply to be a cook substitute. Soon after she began as a cook substitute, she was hired into a part-time cook position at RBC and has been there ever since. It's been twenty-nine-point-four-nine-eight years. And Cheryl got a good pat. Before working here, Cheryl did home catering for about eight years. Cheryl's favorite memory, and I have to let you all know that I worked at RBC with her, and I do remember her favorite memory, and it is when the oven caught on fire and the RBC didn't light. Wait for it, because that's not even it. And while she was getting an oxygen treatment because she was struggling, her fellow cooks, oh, because of her asthma, her fellow cook Kathy Bavita was taking selfies with all of the cute pile of them. I was there. It's true. Cheryl says that most of all, she will miss all the laughs. Even when things are busy and stressful, she and her colleagues always have a good laugh working together. Cheryl's future plans include continue with working with athletics, because she's one of the ticket takers for our athletic events, more travel plans with friends, and helping her daughter out with her two brain kids. So congratulations, Cheryl.
Mrs. McKinney, she did put as her favorite memory that she was one of your bridesmaids.
Oh, that's true. She was.
She was.
Yeah, that really, but all of my kitchen ladies right out here have been telling everybody they were my bridesmaids, so everybody would like to believe them. So even at the wedding, my husband was like, okay, I have to go to the bride's maid, so there are wedding pictures, but my husband and all the ladies in my kitchen and everything. So it's a really good one.
Hard to follow that. All right, but we're going to, we'd like to next present Beth Fortner. Beth has worked her entire career as an educator with the Twinsburg City School District. She's completing her thirty-fourth year. Beth could not pick just one memory as a favorite because she has so many. When asked what she would miss the most upon retirement, Beth said without any doubt she would miss the kids the most. She values her colleagues, and Beth believes they are some of the best people you will ever meet and want to have by your side, but the joy she feels teaching and learning from her students is a feeling that she cannot have replicated. Anytime Beth is outside of the district and hears, Miss Fortner, that warms her heart. The fact that students and former students want to connect with her is always a pleasure. Beth said that this would happen to her father all the time. He was a teacher and a coach and a principal. And when that happened to her father, she always thought she'd long for that to happen to her, too. Beth's favorite memory was hearing, Miss Fortner? And act me number one. Beth's favorite memory was hearing, "Miss Fortner?" in Act Me Number One in Akron. It was one of her very first students who proudly introduced her to his two young sons. That is a memory that she will never forget. Beth said the reward that comes from connecting with students is amazing. She's going to miss it immensely. Beth has great plans for her retirement. She plans to travel and reconnect with friends and family, and she's looking forward to a trip she planned to Ireland with friends and perhaps even with some long-lost cousins. She also hopes that her good friend and colleague Trish Barron will have some time in her retirement to teach her how to golf. There you go, Trish. Congratulations, Beth.
The next retiree that we'd like to recognize is Naya Jones. Naya has dedicated thirty-one years of service to the Twinsburg City School District. Before joining our staff, Naya worked for two years with another district as a lunch aid. Naya's favorite memory comes from two thousand seventeen when she worked with former transportation supervisor Eric Runton, as he always made her feel very special. When asked what she will miss the most, Naya said the students, their laughter, and all the jokes they tell. Naya's plans for her future include continuing her work as, I saw caregiver, but I was thinking, you may as a bus driver. That's what I was gonna say.
Caregiver.
So I just want you to know, as I told Trish, subbing, very flexible. Just cut that out there. Cut that out there, Naya. Naya also worked with me at the middle school, so congratulations.
Next is our pleasure to recognize and honor Debbie Marvel. Debbie has worked for our school district for the past twenty-one of her twenty-three years as an educator. One of Debbie's favorite memories was when the students were so surprised when they came in on the morning of St. Patrick's Day to find that a leprechaun had pranked their classroom. The joyful screams of surprise when they saw streamers and confetti and little amounts of shaving cream on their desks is a memory Debbie will never forget. Debbie said that she will miss the daily interactions with the students. She enjoys greeting kids at parent drop-off, working with students in the large and small group settings, and setting them on their way at the end of the day during parent pickup. Debbie takes pride in the fact that she rarely misses a day of school, maybe twenty absences in twenty-one years. That is remarkable. In her retirement, Debbie plans to volunteer in her community of Aurora and take more trips down to Columbus with her husband Steve, who's here tonight to visit their two grandkids. Congratulations to Debbie. Next, we'd like to honor and celebrate Monica Price. Monica has been with the school district for just six years because she actually worked for the Parma City School District, where she worked and then retired after thirty-eight years of service. Monica is currently our special ed consultant working out of the Office of People's Services here in our school district. Monica has a lot of favorite memories during her time here. Students participating in the Special Olympics, the snowball dance, and the poetry slam at Dodge. Those are just a few examples that bring tears to her eyes. And she says she'll miss her colleagues and especially all of her teacher friends here. And I have to just aside here, you know, we mentioned when Sarah was recognized for continuing contract about the Special Olympics program that our school district participates in. Before Monica got here, we didn't do that, and she was so committed to making sure that the boys and girls are able to do something enjoyable and fun and compete in a fun way against other boys and girls across our region. And last Friday was the day together at Argonian High School, and our kids just had a blast. And I just think, Monica, if you weren't here, that might not have ever happened. And so, thank you. That's your legacy, and we are always going to be grateful for the care that you gave our kids. Thank you very much. And just one more thing. Monica plans to spend time with her grandson Asher. We've heard about Asher since before Asher was Asher. He's a great little guy, and we get lots of photos. I can't wait to keep getting them, Monica. And she's gonna travel with her wonderful husband. I understand he's been retired for two years, and he said enough of this, I want my wife. And so she's going to be traveling to, how do you say it, Curacao? Curacao, in September, and then she's going to Greece next summer. So congratulations to both of you. Enjoy your special time.
The next retiree is Joyce Sloan. Joyce has been a part of our Tiger family for the past twenty-six years. She actually started working here as a substitute and then took her current position as an instructional assistant. Prior to working with our students, Joyce was a girl pride. She worked as a bookkeeper, receptionist, cleaner, babysitter, anything they needed, including doing tax returns. She also stayed the only mother because she was elderly and disabled. This was in Pittsburgh at a company called Accountants and Associates before she and her husband moved here. Joyce's favorite memory of her time here has been working with her students, especially seeing their growth from the beginning to the end of the school year. Joyce says she will miss the boys and girls the most. In her retirement, Joyce's class has spent time with her five grandchildren, traveled, worked in her garden, and made homemade greeting cards. If you are looking for her, Joyce will be spending a lot of time in her sunroom, which overlooks her garden. Congratulations, Joyce.
And finally, it is my pleasure to introduce Barbara Washington. Barbara has worked for thirty-two years in the Twinsburg City School District. Before joining our staff, she worked for four years for Toledo Public Schools. She also worked as a coach for Shaw High School Basketball, as a lifeguard for the city of Shaker Heights and the city of Cleveland. Barbara's total years of service in education are thirty-seven and a half. Barbara's favorite memory would have to be attending her first THS graduation after transferring to Twinsburg High School, the new high school. Students that she had taught at Samuel Bissel Elementary School were now attending their two thousand three graduation. The accomplishments, smiles, and hugs were priceless and memorable. Barbara also remembers with great fondness the thirty-eight years she spent officiating basketball and assisting and traveling to the two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve girls' basketball state championships. All of these experiences prove that our Twinsburg City School District produces great student athletes. Barbara said that the thing she will miss most will be our students, staff, and administration. Having an employment home for thirty-two years, Barbara says it goes without saying that she has been given the opportunity to learn, achieve, and build relationships along the way. Barbara believes that the Twinsburg community provides opportunities for growth among its students and staff. Barbara says that she will miss attending daily classes, however, the bonds and friendships that were built along the way will always remain. Barbara has great plans for her retirement, which will consist of taking a couple of months to enjoy and visit her family. Three sons. She has Darius, who lives in Lakewood, Jalen, who lives in Columbus, and Devante, who lives in Durham, North Carolina, all successful graduates of the Twinsburg City School District. She has great nieces and nephews in Cleveland. Barbara also plans to take a family Mediterranean cruise. Barbara is waiting to start her next chapter in life, her next calling for entrepreneurship, writing a book, opening up a daycare, or just educating our youth in some capacity. Congratulations to Miss Washington. Can I say good words to the retirees?
Well, when I grow up, I have to work in education myself, so I can relate to a lot of the experiences that you guys have had. All I can say is that I am extremely appreciative, and on behalf of the entire board, of your commitment to this school district. The impact that you've made on our students is immeasurable. I'm sure that those memories will go on. But more importantly, the students that you guys impacted, they'll remember that forever. They'll carry that with them forever, and hopefully they'll pass those experiences on along and the lessons that you taught them. So with that said, I truly appreciate all that you've given to this school district, and I hope that you take full advantage of all the free time that you're gonna have on your hands moving forward. We're gonna miss you, and it's not gonna be easy to replace you all, but we truly appreciate all that you've done for our school district. Thank you.
We have two more awards we want to give, so if you want to just, your name's ready, please.
Yeah, exactly. So just before we...
Yeah, that means you have to come in.
This year, for the very first time, we asked Mrs. McKinney to take a leadership role. But we really wanted to recognize Teacher of the Year and Staff Member of the Year in our school district. We have so many outstanding people that work here that support our program, but it's always wonderful to just thank somebody in a special way. And so, thanks to Belinda's leadership, working through the presidents of both the Twinsburg Education Association and the Twinsburg Support Staff Association, a committee was formed, and then subcommittees were formed, and then members of our staff were able to nominate colleagues as Teacher of the Year colleagues not being nominated, and then as Classified Staff Members of the Year. So this evening, Belinda would like to introduce the program a little bit and then announce officially for the first time our Teacher of the Year and our Classified Staff Member of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. And this program, as Mrs. Powers stated, started this year with staff members nominating the Teacher of the Year, or Teacher of the Year, and Classified or Non Teaching Staff Members of the Year. Once they submitted those nominations, then for the Teacher of the Year, I worked with members of the teaching staff that were selected by the Teachers Union president, and we basically read the applications, we had a rubric, we scored them, and then the winner was selected. The people on the committee with me have no idea who won, because they just scored everybody and gave me all the sheets, because we wanted to keep it as a surprise for tonight. A similar process or same process was followed with the Non Teaching Staff. So I worked with members of the Non Teaching Union to, again, we got nominations from the entire district because a teacher can nominate classified, a classified staff member can nominate a teacher. And then we met with that group, scored all of the nominations, and then they gave me their sheets. And so, the unveiling is today. So I'm gonna start with the Classified Staff Member of the Year. The interesting thing about this program is that we really wanted to make it a big surprise tonight. So we had to do a little covert work, and I will say, code work, lie-a-dee. So there are people in the audience tonight who think they're here for one reason, but they're here for another reason. So here we go. Let's start. The Classified Staff Member of the Year for the Twinsburg City School District, two thousand twenty-two, was nominated by colleagues. This person has gone above and beyond for the whole community. Although she has been placed in small populations, when she is upplaced in culture classes, she assures and helps all students, whether in the unit, on an IEP five oh four, or regular education student. There have been foreign exchange students who have come into the Twinsburg that she has reached out and assisted in their transition of learning here at Twinsburg High School. She is up for any challenge given to her, whether this be a student that needs assistance socially, emotionally, educationally, or just needs support because they're having a bad day. If she cannot help because she is not experienced in the area, she makes sure she finds someone who can assist the student and does not leave their side until they are given the proper care. In the five years I have been given the opportunity to work with her, there has never been a time when she did not help me or another teacher to solve a problem. She was always willing to lend a hand, give an idea, or suggestion on how to solve a problem. Teachers, staff members, and students love her and her loving, giving, and empathetic personality. The Classified Staff Member of the Year for two thousand twenty-two is Tiffany Briner. Tiffany's mom works in the district as well, so I called the mom and told her to tell Tiffany that she won the award tonight. Congratulations, Tiffany. Another covert mission. This Teacher of the Year nominee, now winner, I should say, was nominated by three different people. This teacher was nominated by three different staff members, I should say. She is currently serving her students and other students all hours of the day. This is what one of the nominees wrote. "My office is across the hall from her, and every day I get the privilege of hearing her teach her students. She has so much love and respect for every student in her classroom and uses her encouraging and uplifting personality to inspire all students to learn and grow. She treats each and every student as staff member like they are a part of her family. She goes above and beyond for each of her students and families. She gets to know them on a personal level. She creates a classroom environment where every child grows not only academically, but emotionally as well. Students and families seem to open up to her, and they know without a doubt that she cares about them. Her lessons are created to meet the, her students where they are. She pushes each student forward and provides staff funding for both her higher and lower-level students. She is constantly learning new teaching strategy and excitedly shares these with her coworkers. No matter what is going on with her personal life, she is always placing others first." Third nomination person, nominator, I should say, said, "She is a dedicated teacher. She spends countless hours and long nights preparing for her students' individual needs each week. She also attends many conferences, workshops during her personal time off. She is always interested in improving her teaching and brings best practices in her first-grade classroom." The Twinsburg City School District Teacher of the Year for two thousand twenty-two is Melissa Zane. Yeah, Melissa thought she was here to report to someone else.
Okay, so before we go on our recess, it's fitting that we did, we recognized our outgoing treasurer, Mr. Marty Aho. Over the last couple of months, the board has been engaged in the process of trying to find our new treasurer, whoever, someone who's going to replace Mr. Aho. They choose to fill. So I'm happy to say that this evening, we will be voting to confirm the placement of our new treasurer. So she is here this evening. I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for her to engage our community and to introduce herself. Her name is Julia Razania, and she comes to us from Cardinal Global Schools. And I'll just say personally, and I think the board will agree, out of all the candidates, it was a pretty argumentative process. We vetted a lot of candidates. Julia stood out from the very first moment that we met her. We actually brought her before us twice because we wanted to, you know, make sure. We asked a lot of questions, made sure that, you know, she was up to the task. And she proved herself beyond a doubt that she's definitely up to the task. So she is here this evening. I want to ask her to come up and introduce herself. But before she comes up, I want to have our Twinsburg community let her know and give her a nice, warm Twinsburg welcome.
Mr. Powers, thank you for the performance. For members, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It is great pleasure to be here with all of you tonight. I'm very excited to join the big Twinsburg family. I feel that I've been preparing my career for this moment. I work with similar and comparable school districts in northeast Ohio, and I am looking forward to bringing the team aboard, helping in any way that I can along with my department, to reach our ultimate goal, to help our students to achieve the best that they can while being good stewards of our taxpayers' money. Thank you. Thank you for your trust in me. I'm looking forward to working with every single one of you.
Okay, we're gonna take a short recess and then we'll re-�ain and then we'll... So here are instructions out from the...
And next on the agenda is committee reports.
Can we have an amendment? Oh, no, you're right.
Yeah.
You got it?
I got it.
Okay.
Which one do you want me to do? Well...
Go. Well, you're gonna do both of them, please.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have an administrative report on finance in a little bit. So the Finance Committee did meet, and the results of that meeting will be the agenda in the presentation. Yesterday, the Business Advisory Council also met. And after review of our minutes, Superintendent Powers gave us an update. And I did as well for the board. And that meeting consisted of Alex Pavlovich giving us an update on the Connections Program and all the things that have been going there. Very exciting that that program is now being relaunched. That was formerly the Academy. And there are thirty-two, sorry, excuse me, thirty-one students currently enrolled, but we hope that to grow. He also reported out about the job fair that was very successful. That happened in April, and a visit to Royer Stokes under the auspices of STEM. And I have in my notes sixty-two kids, I think, went to that. So with those updates, the President's Advisory Committee closed. And those are my two committee updates.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Felver. So we'll move on over to the administrative report. Mrs. Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Board of Education, this evening on the agenda, later in the Action Items New Business under thirteen and fourteen, we're going to ask the board to authorize the academic fees and paid-to-participate fees and the breakfast and lunch prices for the 2022-23 school year. But I wanted to just give the community a brief overview of the program here regarding these fees. So again, this is about academic fees, pay-to-participate, and the breakfast and lunch prices for the school year of 2022-23. Board of Education, last Thursday during the Finance Subcommittee meeting, we talked about the academic fees. And at that meeting, Mr. Felver and Mr. Curtis made the recommendation that the academic fees would be frozen again in the coming year. And so, the fee prices that you see here on the screen are the same fee prices that were charged for the 21-22 school year. That would be for preschool, our integrated preschool program, the tuition. I'm sorry, the fee is seventy-five dollars, and the kindergarten and preparatory fee for the students would be eighty-five dollars. Primarily, those dollars are used for snacks for the children, and that's separate than the tuition costs. This is the fee for the snacks that the children enjoy and some consumable product that we purchased for the kindergarten, the preschool programs. In grades K through three, the cost of academic fees would remain at eighty dollars. In grades four through six, ninety-five dollars. In grades seven and eight, ninety dollars. Grade nine, fifty-five dollars. And in grades ten through twelve, forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Board of Education, the academic fees pay for a lot of things, including the workbooks that the students use, consumable products, for example, in the art classrooms, all the paper that we use pays for a lot of the apps that the students are using now. You hear us talk a lot in our presentations to you about this new thing called iXL. All those fees are associated with what the academic fee is paid for by our parents. So again, that fee would not increase for the 2022-23 school year. It would remain the same as the current year. Now, a number of years ago, the Board of Education determined that if a child who is eligible for the federal lunch program receives the free lunch... that if a child who is eligible for the federal lunch program receives the free lunch eligibility, that their academic fees are waived. And the recommendation is that would continue for the 2022-23 school year. Additionally to that, students whose children qualify for the reduced-price meal program through the federal lunch program would pay a reduced cost at one-half for their child. What I want to say at this point, and an important, I guess, commercial announcement is, for the last two school years, you know, the USDA provided the summer seamless program. And all of our students in our school district had the benefit of not paying for breakfast and lunch. And so some of our parents have not filed for eligibility for the federal meal program because they really didn't need to, right? But now, moving into the next school year, it will be important for our families who believe they may be eligible to complete the application and also the waiver form. And the importance of the waiver form is the fact that when a parent applies for the federal meal program, that is very confidential information. And the only person who is aware of the application status is our food service supervisor, district dietitian, Mark Bindis. He is forbidden by federal law to share that information with anybody. And so if a parent would like us to consider their eligibility status for the purpose of free or reduced qualifiers as it implies to the academic fees, a parent has to sign a waiver to allow Mark then to release that information to the building principals, who in turn help to collect the fees for the school district. So lots of families did not apply for eligibility, didn't have to. And now, I just want to let that be known, that if your family believes that you qualify, you must, in the coming school year, take a moment to please apply for your family's eligibility. We will work to release the application early in the summer, as soon as we're able to. I'm understanding through Mr. Bindis, it won't be till July first, that the federal government will release the applications for the next school year. But as soon as that is released, we will push that out through Blackboard Connect so you have that information, moms and dads. And then, if you believe your family might qualify, please make sure that you apply. And then we respectfully request that you sign that waiver. It will just help us provide the services that your child is eligible for. With regard to pay-to-participate, the pay-to-participate fees that are charged for students who participate in athletic programs, co-curricular programs, and extracurricular programs are actually about twenty-five percent of the total cost of running those programs. And many years ago, in the 2011 and '12 school year, when the operational plan was developed, operational change plan was developed, the Board of Education at that time determined that we would have this fee structure. And they understand that it's, sometimes it's a hardship for families. And so they wanted to set the fee structure at a fair amount. And so the thought that the fees that we charge here only equate to twenty-five percent of what it actually costs for a child to participate in that program has been set now for many years. And I'm often reminded, when I talk about pay-to-participate fees with members of our school family, is that children who participate in recreational and traveling pay a far greater amount than what, say, a student who is participating on our baseball team would pay. And so we are recommending the same for this year, that the fee structure that you receive in your packet that is on the agenda tonight, at the twenty-five percent cost of the program, would continue again. And it's a four-year trend. Mr. Welker has these mammoth spreadsheets that he keeps and talks about the cost of transportation and the supplemental contracts that support the program, uniforms and facility costs, and it goes on and on and on. Fees to get into competitions. And so we add all those up, and we take an average over four years. And then twenty-five percent of that is what the cost of pay-participate fee is. And so that will move forward. Now, continuing in the 2022-23 school year, again, the importance to apply for your federal meal eligibility is, a family who is eligible and qualifies for the federal meal program at the reduced cost would receive the pay-to-participate fee at a one-quarter cost of the program. And then a family who is eligible for the free meal program will have their pay-to-participate fee reduced by one-half. Again, such importance is placed now on making sure that you apply and that you sign the waiver. The next slide is an example of what I mean by this. So say, for example, you, your family qualifies for free lunches and breakfasts, and your child wants to participate in the high school bowling team, and the recommended fee is a hundred dollars. Because your child qualifies for the free lunches, your reduced price would be one-half of the actual pay-to-participate fee. So your fee would be fifty dollars. Likewise, if your family qualifies for the reduced-price breakfast or lunch federal program, and say, your child wants to participate as a member of the Twinsburg High School tennis team, that fee is being recommended at eighty dollars a student. So the price is reduced by one-quarter, so your fee would be sixty dollars. So again, really important for our parents to apply if they're, if they think they might be eligible. And Mr. Bindis will turn that application process around as quickly as he possibly can. So for all sports and activities, again, please make sure that you're applying if you're eligible, if you think you might be eligible. And then the waiver is the secondary piece that has to be signed. Otherwise, Mr. Bindis is not able to share with the building principals anything about your child's eligibility status with regard to the federal meal program. For many years now, families have paid their fees through something called Easy Pay. We still accept payment by cash. However, the other option is the Easy Pay portal, which is found on the district website. I wanted to note here tonight, Board of Education, that the service fee per transaction has been raised by twenty-five cents. So now it's three dollars a transaction if you're paying your fees by Easy Pay. That's new information we just received the last day or so. The link is on the website for Easy Pay. And Mr. Fantone, who is our Athletic Director, Coordinator of K-12 Student Activities, is the administrator, excuse me, that oversees the pay-to-participate fees for the schools. Academic fees fall under the responsibility of the building principals. So if parents have either question, questions for academic fees, we ask you to contact your building principal. Pay-to-participate fees, please contact Mr. Fantone, and he's happy to help. Any questions about the pay-to-participate or the academic fees that are being suggested for the coming year?
Just a comment. I've witnessed about nine years of Mr. Welker's spreadsheet. So this data beyond the four-year average. I think we're in the tenth year. And there's a lot of factors. And unlike other districts that just do a lump-sum fee, many districts around us, especially on the pay-to-participate, are a hundred percent, meaning the students are paying. So if they're, and Twins are paying two-twenty-five for a sport, other schools are charging a thousand. And, you know, we recognize the critical nature of this. But it seems to be a very fair price. Not every sport is equal in cost and equipment and such. And also, a lot of the teams with larger numbers can bring the average cost down. So they kind of have a trade-off. But it's, it's an intriguing process. The only complaint I have is the size of the numbers on some of the spreadsheets. Mr. Welker said he's gonna make them bigger for more.
No, the only thing that I would add is, this particular, probably this year and last year were particularly challenging because of COVID. So when we, when we dove into the numbers and did our analysis, it wasn't always so clean and cut with a few sports because we recognized that there was a COVID impact with respect to some of the participation in some sports, based on when it was occurring, especially when there was a mask mandate or there were a bunch of rules around a student's ability to participate. And so in instances, in instances like that, we actually modified it so that there wouldn't be a spike in the cost of that sport. And we did some things so that, you know, we could mitigate, you know, COVID impact for, for, for some sports. The other piece that we looked at is, we went ten years back, just in participation trends in some sports, because we always want to be cognizant of participation and making sure that these fees aren't impacting participation. We look at, we look for dips, we look for peaks and things like that. And so, you know, over, over ten years, there hasn't been much, much change. If any, in some sports, there was actually increase. I know that, you know, in track and other sports, we saw significant increase in, in participation. And so I want everyone to understand that, that there's a lot of thought that goes into this process, because we want to make sure that, that it is fair. And where, you know, there are, you know, there are things that, you know, impact the cost where it's over and above an individual's responsibility to manage or the district's responsibility to manage. You know, we take that into account, and we want to make sure that we make adjustments to the fees before they make it out. So I just wanted to make sure that we made, that I made mention of, of the extent to which we actually did our analysis, because it wasn't, these two years have not been traditional. So we wanted to take that into account and make sure that we recognize, you know, any impact, you know, you know, from, from the pandemic. I don't know if there's anything else that you would add, Mr. Welker?
I think you summarized it very well.
Okay.
I'll just note, like, from just other comments from other folks that I know some aren't happy about play to participate. I would like, if we could, in the future, maybe look at, when it comes to, like, the reduced, the folks who are, like, free-reduced or half-reduced, if they're, you know, struggling based upon lunches. Obviously, it could be a struggle with playing sports. So I would just, you know, kind of look into that in the future after we've done, like, our analysis, like, with things that we've looked at before, and kind of see what we can do to make sure that it's fair for everybody and no one isn't playing because they just can't. So that would be my only, my only thing.
I would point out that we did look at that a couple of years ago. And those that are on those free and reduced programs are also extended to discount on the athletics.
Yeah, that's, I know. I was saying, they, they get the discount, but like...
I'm saying the discount off the, you know, so if, whatever the twenty-five percent price is, if they're on free, I think they get fifty percent of that price. Correct me if I'm wrong. If they're on reduced, they get a quarter reduction of the pay-to-participate price, so.
Yeah.
And again, we have, we, you know, we heard the concern about participation very soon after that program was launched, and the numbers don't bear out. And the participation did not drop. In fact, as Mr. Curtis said, it went up in many cases.
And again, I just want to reiterate that, you know, we're, we're sensitive to, to, to concerns in, in the community around pay-to-participate. This isn't anything new to us. I just want folks to recognize that we, we approach how we analyze this information with that sensitivity. So the extent to which we can adapt and change things, we do. So we'll always keep our ear to the ground and take opportunities where we can, you know, help defray the burden for families, so that we can make sure that it is equitable for all of our families.
So then, moving along here, Board of Education, we haven't talked about school lunch prices for two years, because we didn't have to. So now that it would appear that the federal government is not supporting free breakfast and lunch for all for next year, we have to revisit the lunch and breakfast prices this evening. Those prices that you see before you would be a twenty-five-six cent increase across the board as compared to the nineteen-twenty school year. And honestly, we haven't had an increase in breakfast and lunch programs for several years before that. As Mr. Bindis will tell you, it is becoming a challenge just being able to get the food here. Labor costs are up. And in our school district, the food services program tries to be self-sufficient. And that is a mark to Mark Bindis and how hard he works in balancing the budget in food service. So he respectfully requested an increase, and he was able to substantiate the need by his trend data. And so in our Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Curtis and Mr. Felber agreed that the charges that you see here would be those that we would recommend this evening to you. First of all, students in kindergarten through grade three, their lunch price would be three dollars and twenty-five cents a day. For grades four through six, it is three dollars and fifty cents. In grades seven and eight, three dollars and fifty cents. In grades nine through twelve, three dollars and fifty cents. Those are all the lunch prices. And then for breakfast, across all grade levels, the cost will be two dollars. Now, at the high school, especially, and sometimes the middle school, the students enjoy buying à la carte, and so that will be back next year. All of the food service, services that we've had the last two years, everything has been a little off-kilter, and the ability for kids to buy à la carte was somewhat diminished because of the restrictions that we had in place. So we're looking forward to next year getting back to a sense of much more normal with the à la carte offerings for the students. And of course, those won't be on the breakfast and lunch price page. Mark will set those fees, and those will be announced to the students the next fall. So any questions about the breakfast and lunch costs for the 2022-23 school year?
No questions. Just another comment is that these increases are purely market-driven. These are just costs that have been passed on to us that unfortunately, we could not absorb. Mark, I know, tries very hard to, to maintain costs or keep maintaining them at, at the same level for as long as he possibly can. So, you know, what he presented to us, you know, was reasonable. He was able to justify the increases. And these are, these are things that are well beyond his control. You know, supply chain issues and so forth and so on. So just wanted to make sure that people understood what was impacting these, these price increases.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Next is remonstrance. We do have two cards, blue cards for remonstrance. So I will read the statement around remonstrance as well. "Pursers wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card found in the lobby to the treasurer prior to the meeting so that they may be recognized by the Board President and welcome to make comment. Nor, no formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the Board has had an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the Office of the Superintendent. Although there is more, a normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at a board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person is allotted five minutes until the total time of thirty minutes has been used. Each person addressing the Board is asked to give his or her name and address." So I have is Ellen, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Sobineski. Almost. I was close.
Okay, I am, I am Ellen Sobinski. I am, oh, my address, I'm sorry, is thirty-five sixty Orchard Drive in Stowe, Ohio. My, I am a area representative for ASSE, International Student Exchange. And I'm here tonight to thank the Twinsburg Schools system and the community for welcoming one of our students in your school. And I would like you to hear from her too, her experiences a little bit. And I'm hoping to be working with you guys again in the future. So, thank you from the deepest part of my heart and ASSE.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll follow up with the students. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say your first name, because I don't, I don't want to butcher, I don't want to butcher her second name, her last name. But Samira, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samira Salmachunova. I'm for an exchange student from Flex Program. And my area representative is Mrs. Ellen from ASSE. She is my coordinator. And I'm from Kyrgyzstan. And I was so glad to be part of Ohio and part of Twinsburg High School as a junior there. It was good experience to see another community. And because everything is different, it was very helpful to me to learn about everything. This is my fourth language, English is my fourth language. And I will try to explain you my appreciation. And I'm really thankful for Twinsburg High School, that they gave me the opportunity to study in the school. My favorite thing in my school, in Twinsburg High School, was that I had opportunity to be a part of dance program. be a part of dance program, dance team, it's Blue Diamonds. And I'm so grateful to them that I could dance with them. Also, I'm so grateful for my teachers because they helped me a lot. Also, the, I'm grateful for my friends who could hang out with me a lot and I want to thank you again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me tell you, if you are with Blue Diamonds, I know you can dance. So that is awesome. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story with us. Okay. I will leave my glasses here. All right, so we'll get on to the business portion of our meeting. K, action items personnel, without objection from my colleagues, I will read K one through three together. K one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel under contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel under contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the date's terms and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion for items K one through three? So moved by Mrs. Travis. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Crawford. Any discussion?
Mr. Curtis, if you may, if I may, please.
Yes.
Board of Education, I'm on the spreadsheets tonight. I hope you found the administrative documents and I just want to bring the administrators forward for special recognition. So they're not out here because some of them are busy like Mr. Fantel has and he's not here tonight, but if you would invite you guys. First, Mr. Askey from Wilcox Primary School, unfortunately he's not here. Ms. Barding, Director of Curriculum, Monica Olshen. Twan Honeycutt, our Director of Pink Services. This is Missy Johnson, Principal Samuel Bissel. Beth Mariola, Supervisor of Innovative Programs. This is Valinda McKinney, Director of Strategic. Lisa Moore, Assistant Principal, RB Chandler. Jim Reese, Principal, RB Chandler. Lynn Villa, Principal, Wilcox Primary School. Julian Walker, Assistant Principal, Laura Sheba. Chad Walker, Business Manager. Emily Williamson-Hunt, Assistant Principal, Twinsburg High School. Scott Winter, Assistant Principal, Samuel Bissel. Tracy Abbott, Assistant Transportation Supervisor. And Brian Fantone, Athletic Director, Coordinator of K-12 Student Exchange. Board of Education, you know, we celebrated great teachers tonight and celebrated our retirees. I just wanted to say these administrators plus those who are not up for contract renewals this year really make the place work and they're very talented, they're very dedicated. They leave with their hearts and their minds and they connect kids to great opportunities. You say we're in the opportunity business and I don't think a day goes by when we're not thinking about some new program, some new way of looking at something, some way of connecting kids to their next best. And so it is my honor and privilege to recommend these administrators for contract renewals. I am honored to serve in your company. I thank you for choosing us and I wish your next term of your contract to be the best ever and I just thank you for being my friend. So congratulations.
I, I just have to say, and I've said this before, you know, I think, I think we have one of the best administrative teams around. You guys are the backbone of this district. You make things work. You work long hours. You're here this evening again. And it, it doesn't go without saying how much what you do is, is really appreciated more than you know. I, I walk in your shoes every day too, so I know for sure what you do, but you don't have to do what I do or you do to, to recognize and understand the impact that you make on kids and that you make on this district every day. So this is a small token, in my opinion, of our appreciation of, you know, this process. You do a lot more, you go above and beyond and so, you know, I'd like to let you know that, you know, we truly appreciate, you know, all that you do every day.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, thank you. I don't think I know. Did I, did I talk to the rest of them? I know. And, and having the privilege to travel around the area and be and work in different school districts, I put you guys up against anybody and you win. So we really appreciate what you do and you do have your heart and souls. Many of you have had my kids through the years and put up with them. That's enough to make you a prize tonight. But we do appreciate what you do and we do know wholeheartedly that you have your heart and soul in Twinsburg and we really appreciate that so much and you are the best.
And I would say it's been a pleasure working with a lot of you. Not only have you had my kids, but a lot of, you know, got to work with personally with being on PTA. So you wear so many different hats, work hard all the time and it's, I just wish people could see what the administrators do, like all the stuff that you guys are doing, like because like when you see what you're doing behind the scenes and I'm just like, we just need to like throw you parties all the time, like because you do so much and I'm just so thankful for everything that you do each and every day and can't say thank you enough.
I think the common thing would be a dissenting opinion because I can't top the three of you. Yeah, Jito, I mean, really, how can I top what you guys said and the relationships and what we've been through over the years, you know, we've seen, you know, how this district rises the challenge continually and we couldn't do it without the team. So thank you very much.
Okay. So if there are no more comments, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. And that item passes four zero. I'll move on to item L, action items, new business. And without objection from my colleagues, I will read items L one through 15. L one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of some media center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. Two, that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Wilcox Primary PTA in the amount of $5,555 to cover the cost of Strider bikes, helmets and curriculum for all kids' bike PE program per the attached exhibit. Three, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School Boys and Girls Track Team to travel to Jesse Owens Stadium in Columbus, Ohio for the OHSAA State and Track and Field Championships on Thursday, June 2nd, returning on Saturday, June 4th, 2022. The cost of this trip is being paid in full by the Twinsburg Athletic Department with assistance from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters as sent to the Board under separate cover. Four, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with Learn Well for one student to attend the Windsor Laurelwood Center for Behavioral Medicine Adolescent and Patient Unit at a cost not to exceed $3,500 based on the length of stay from April 26th through the end of the school year billed at $45 an hour for 10 weeks of service with additional added administrative costs as sent to the Board under separate cover. Five, that the Twinsburg Board of Education ratifies the previous determination of impracticality of transportation August 18th, 2021 for the below listed schools and further updates the students for the 2122 school year per the Ohio Department of Education in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 3325.01. The list of students is kept on file at the Transportation Office and the Board further resolves to approve an in lieu of transportation payment at the end of the school year of up to $538.55 for 126 students for the 2122 school year per the Ohio Department of Education. Six, that the Twinsburg Board of Education authorizes superintendent to determine that transporting students is impractical after considering individual data relevant to each particular situation and analyzing the factors outlined in Revised Code 3327.02. Such determinations shall be subject to formalization at the next following board meeting, meeting of the Board. Seven, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the ice rink facility use agreement with the city of Garfield Heights, Ohio Municipal Corporation care of Dan Costo Recreation Center, 5411 Turney Road in Garfield Heights, Ohio for the use of the ice rink and facility for the Twinsburg High School Hockey, Hockey Team from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the Board under separate cover. Eight, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the gymnastics facility use agreement with Gym World of Twinsburg, 9085 Dutton Drive, Twinsburg, Ohio, 44087, for the use of the gymnastics facility for the Twinsburg High School Gymnastics Team from November 1st, 2022 through March 1st, 2023, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the Board under separate cover. Nine, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the bowling facility use agreement with Roseland Lanes, 26383 Broadway Road Avenue, Bedford, Ohio, 44146, for the use of the bowling facility for the Twinsburg High School Bowling Team from September 1st, 2022 through March 11th, 2023, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the Board under separate cover. Ten, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the tennis facility use agreement with Western Reserve Racket and Fitness Club, 11013 Aurora Hudson Road Streetsboro, Ohio, 44241, for use of their tennis facility from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the Board under separate cover. And 11, the, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract with Doubletree by Hilton Washington DC North Gathersburg for hotel rooms for the fall 2022 eighth grade Washington DC trip, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement as sent to the Board under separate cover. 12, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the contract with Barron's Bus Lines, PO Box 31088, Independence, Ohio for charter bus services for the fall 2022 eighth grade Washington DC trip, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement as sent to the Board under separate cover. 13, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the academic fees and pay to participate fees in the 2022-2023 school year per the attached exhibit. 14, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the revised breakfast and lunch prices for the 2223 school year as noted below. And 15, that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a resolution to permit Superintendent Katherine Powers to convert up to an additional 10 days of unused vacation leave days as set forth in the resolution as sent to the Board under separate cover. This action is necessitated due to the extraordinary amount of work associated with operating in the district during the unprecedented pandemic and Superintendent Powers inability to use vacation leave during those circumstances. This agreement is non precedent setting. Do I have a motion to approve items L one through six, one through 15? So moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Travis. Any discussion? I would like to notate the donation to Wilcox, the Wilcox Primary School PTA. Really appreciate any and all donations and we got a chance to actually see that donation in action a couple of times. I had one board meeting and also during the state of the schools address. Students really got a lot of use out of it and as I understand, this is something that's gonna, we're gonna try to keep going, ongoing, so I really appreciate that. Also, I want to acknowledge and wish our athletes luck going down to Columbus for the, for the state track meet and hope that they place well and do well. Also, the Washington DC trip, it's been a long time. It got a little bumpy with the vendor that we used previous, but we're able to recalibrate and get back to, you know, making that trip. That's one of the biggest trips of the year. And so I want to thank Mr. Reese in particular and his staff for all of the diligence and work that goes behind making that trip, making it go. And so I'm really excited for the students to be able to experience that again.
Mr. Curtis, just a note for the families, we usually went in the spring and we were not able to get the hotel room, rooms and transportation. So in the coming year, the eighth graders will go to the ball.
Okay. Thanks for making that clarification. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Okay, that item passes four zero. Next is L 16. Whereas, Board of Education desires to employ Julia Roznaya in the position of Treasurer and Mrs. Roznaya's desire to be employed by the Board of Education in the position of Treasurer for a period of three years effective August 1st, 2022 and continuing through July 31st, 2025. And whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 3313.22, Board of Education is required to execute a written contract of employment with the Treasurer and is authorized to appoint a Treasurer for a term not longer than five years, beginning the first day of August and ending the 30th, the 31st day of July. And whereas the Board of Education and Ms., Mrs. Roznaya have reviewed a contract of employment of Mrs. Roznaya as Tre, as Treasurer effective August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2025, set, which sets forth the terms and conditions of Mrs. Roznaya's employment, including compensation. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby employs Julia Roznaya's as its Treasurer pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 3313.22, under the terms and conditions of a three-year employment contract effective August 1st, 2022 through July 31st, 2025, as sent to the Board under separate cover and authorizes and directs the Board President to execute such employment contract with Mrs. Roznaya on behalf of the Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education shall pay Mrs. Roznaya an annual salary of $115,000 unless the Board of Education subsequently approves an increase and there, and be it resolved, and I'm sorry, and be it further resolved that it is hereby found and determined that all formal action of this Board of Education concerning and or relating to the adoption of this resolution was taken in an open meeting of this Board and that all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees that resulted
that resulted in such formal action were in, were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one, point two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Do I have a motion for items L sixteen? So, moved by Mr. Felber. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Crawford. Discussion?
I'm going to true.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, we, we appreciate the process, long and arduous as Mr. Curtis had said. And it's a changing of the guard. And we're very excited to be working with you. We've got some challenges, as you know, but I think we're going to be up to it as a team.
I know I made comments earlier. But I just wanted to say, at the point during the interview when we asked her to tell us a little bit about herself and she told us her story, her journey to the United States and basically what it took for her to get to where she is today. I was particularly moved by that story and I think it's just a testament of how hard you work, how dedicated you are to what you do. And I think that we're fortunate to have you here in Twinsburg and I truly appreciate the opportunity, giving you the opportunity to be here and try and jump into the, some pretty big shoes. Marty's been here for twenty years and the stability has been great. We're hopeful that you will allow us to continue in that, you know, having that longevity. So, welcome, welcome to Twinsburg City Schools.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your kind words. They mean a lot to me. Thank you for all of your trust in me.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. That passes four oh. Congratulations. Okay, next is items L seventeen. Board of Education Policy ninety-one, thirty Resolution Regarding a Public Complaint. Whereas on February fifth, twenty-twenty-two, Kathy Turl Waldron sent to Board President Mark Curtis and Board members Rob Felber and Tina Davis an email with the subject line, Safety. And a second email on February eighth, twenty-twenty-two with the subject line Cheerleading that contained five attachments. Whereas upon review of the emails, it was determined that they constituted a public complaint that needed to be investigated in accordance with Board Policy ninety-one, thirty, Public Complaints and Grievances. And whereas on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Athletic Coordinator Brian Fantone, the person in charge of the district services, operations at issue in the complaint, which in this case involved the district's athletic and extracurricular programming, submitted a Level One response to Mrs. Turl Waldron. And whereas on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Mrs. Turl Waldron sent a reply email to Mr. Fantone asking about the next steps to advance her complaint to the next level. And on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, Business Manager Chad Welker sent Mrs. Turl Waldron an email informing her that to expedite the resolution of her complaint, the district planned to combine levels two and three of the Policy ninety-one, thirty appeals process. And whereas Mr. Welker also asked Mrs. Turl Waldron to provide specific information related to her claims and indicated he and Superintendent Catherine Powers should schedule a virtual meeting with her to further discuss the complaint after the requested information was supplied. And whereas on March first, twenty-twenty-two, Mr. Kurt, I'm sorry, Mr. Chris Waldron and Mrs. Turl Waldron sent an email outlining their specific allegations and concerns. And whereas on March tenth, twenty-twenty-two, Mrs. Powers sent an email to Mrs. Turl Waldron in which she thanked her for the information and she and her husband provided in their March first, twenty-twenty-two email to Mr. Welker asked whether they wanted her to schedule a virtual meeting with them. Mr. Welker and her to discuss Waldron's complaint and stated that if they declined her offer to meet, that she and Mr. Welker would consider the information they provided on March first, twenty-twenty-two and sent a joint Level Two and Three written response to them. And whereas on April sixth, twenty-twenty-two, Mrs. Powers received an email from the Waldrons in which they indicated a desire to have the matter proceed to the board for its consideration. And whereas the superintendent sent a letter via email to the Waldrons on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, in which she set forth her and the business manager's joint Levels Two and Three response to the Waldron's public complaint and specifically affirmed Mr. Fantone's explanation concerning the issues Mrs. Turl Waldron raised in her initial February fifth, twenty-twenty-two email to the, to Board President Curtis and Board members Felber and Davis. And whereas Mrs. Powers also advised Waldron's that pursuant to their April sixth, twenty-twenty-two email, she would notify Board President Curtis and they are requesting to escalate this matter to Level Four and requesting a meeting with the board and further advised Waldron's of the following. One, in accordance with Board Policy ninety-one, thirty, the Board will review all material relating to this case, i.e. all letters and emails, including attachments, and I have outlined above and decide whether to grant a meeting before the board. Two, if the Board decides to grant a meeting, the treasurer will notify them of the date and time of the meeting. Three, if the Board decides not to grant a meeting, it will not, it will adopt a resolution setting forth its decision on the matter. And whereas the Waldron's sent a reply email to Superintendent Powers on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two relating to her letter and email of that date in which they further detailed their concerns, which purportedly led to Mrs. Turl Waldron submitting her February fifth, twenty-twenty-two email that initiated the public complaint process described above and again requesting a meeting with the board to discuss their concerns. And whereas this matter has been duly advanced to the board and in accordance with Board Policy ninety-one, thirty, the board members have been provided with copies of all material related to this case, i.e. all of the letters and emails, including attachments that are outlined above for their review. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Twinsburg City School District, that one, the Board declines to meet with Chris Waldron and Kathy Turl Waldron concerning the public complaint that Mrs. Turl Waldron filed on February fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And two, the Board acknowledges that each received copies of all material related to this case, i.e. all letters and emails, including attachments that are outlined above and that each reviewed those materials. Three, that the Board affirms the April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two decision issued by Superintendent Powers and Business Manager Chad Welker, which in turn affirmed the decision issued by Athletic Coordinator Brian Fantone on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. The Board directs and authorizes Board President Mark Curtis to issue a written notice of such affirmation on behalf of the Board. Five, the Board rec, further authorizes and directs treasurer, the treasurer to provide Mr. Waldron and Mrs. Turl Waldron with a copy of the Board's written notice and to attach this resolution to such written notice. Be it further resolved that it is hereby found and determined that all formal action of this board concerning and relating to this adoption of this resolution was taken in an open meeting of this board and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one, point two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Do I have a motion for items L seventeen? So, moved by Mrs. Travis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Felber. Any discussion? I would just like to make sure and then clarify that this board has received any and all materials relative to the complaint, has had an opportunity to review them fully for consideration of this resolution.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis? Nope, that was right. Who's talking?
Felber.
Mr. Felber. What am I doing here? I know. I tell you, last, you know. Yeah. It's getting amazing. Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Okay, motion passes four zero. Okay, next is miscellaneous. Do we have anything for miscellaneous?
I have one. RV CBN and orchestra both very seeing some very superior and awesome ratings following up behind the symphony band. So, I want to congratulate our music department from top to bottom. It takes all of them from, we start the music program in RV, in Dodge intermediate school and build it all the way up. So, congratulations for that building process that's happening in our district with the music department.
I was gonna put that in my president's report, but I decided not to because I knew that you were gonna
Thank you.
do it for miscellaneous. Last week I had an opportunity to attend a baseball game. I've been trying all year, but they kept getting delayed and, you know, with the rain and so forth. So, now it's like a game almost every day. So, I had one day that I didn't have anything going on, imagine that. So, I took, I took the opportunity to go that evening and watch them play. They won. Great team, great effort. I think they played the Black Tigers in Cuyahoga Falls. Awesome, and I think that they are about to start postseason play. So, wish them luck and also all the other spring sports that are underway right now. I just, I just had an opportunity to go see them play baseball.
I wanted to comment on last week at the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Superintendent Powers and her team presented the State of the Schools in a very robust and entertaining fashion. We had everything from bicycles and amazing students and I wasn't crying. I think Mark was when the three heroes came up from the stopping the bus accidents. But also wanted to give a shout out to all my colleagues on the chamber. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars of scholarships were given, the highest amount ever. It's amazing. The, the comment from a lot of the businesses that they couldn't choose, so they would add scholarships because our students were that amazing. And you saw a lot of the same names coming up. And one of the ones in my company awarded, she's, you know, has a full ride, but without, you know, tuition and, I'm sorry, without books and, and these scholarships were covering that. I mean, just some amazing future leaders from our Tigers. And it was a really, really good presentation, very well received. Many city officials and of course administration that was there to support. So, and I think the first ever full, complete board presence at a chamber State of the Schools. So, thank you for the chamber for allowing us to do that and for the superintendent and her team for delivering that message.
I just wanted to say, I'm the student achievement liaison for the school board and we have the fair every year in November and we, we were talking about the bike program and I did nominate our program for a table for our bike program. So, we'll see if we get chosen to represent there with the table as well as each district is able to nominate a performing, performing group. And so, I talked to Mr. Lynn and we're gonna nominate the jazz band. So, hopefully we can see some of our school district represented at our conference in November. And I just wanted, with school ending, just wish everyone safe and fun last week of, what do we have? Eight more days? One?
Seven.
Six, six more? And
Seven more.
We have graduation next week with the seniors, so that, that'll be very exciting to see that class of twenty, twenty-two graduate. So, just wishing them the best and good luck on their next journey.
Mr. Curtis, I have one more. I know that Mr. Popovich has done this, but I would like to publicly thank all of the community workforce that came out for the interview of our high school's juniors and seniors and giving your time as community members to come into our high school and allow our children to walk through and meet you and shake hands and have you invite them into your businesses to take a look and do those types of things. So, we want to just thank all the community members that showed up at that fair and thank Mr. Popovich for putting that all together.
Very well. Okay, we'll go on to executive session. We do have a need for executive session, so the board will enter into executive session at nine twenty-five to discuss employment and compensation of public employees as per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-A and to consider the purchase of property for public purposes as per Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-six-C. I'll make the motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Crawford. Mr. Aho, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're now into the executive session. Thank you and good night.